Good evening, everyone. We will call the February 3, 2014 City Council Meeting to Order. First order of business is the roll call. Charlene.
Estes. Peterson. Lewis. Doyle. Wright. Scott. Nordstrom. Roberts. Clayton. Laurenti. We have Quorum.
And now we will have our invocation offered by Pastor Troy Carr of Faith Temple. You are welcome to participate, but not required.
Dear God, we thank you for the blessings of this day. We thank you for life, health, and strength. My prayer tonight is that you would bless the council, men and women, to give them wisdom to make decisions for our city. We pray for our mayor, our governor, our president, and God, we ask that you would bless the United States of America. In Jesus' name, amen. The United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, just for all.
Thank you, Pastor Carr. We'll now move on to the adoption of the agenda. Are there any changes to tonight's agenda? We have one so far, and that is item 34, which is on consent, will be pulled from consent when we get to that. And there will be questions, not only on the resolution to dissolve tax increment District Number 41, but we will expand item 34 to allow for general questions of our county auditor who's here tonight regarding the mill levy and property taxes. So if that's agreeable with the council, we will amend 34. Are we allowed to do that? Or would you prefer a...
Make that motion.
Okay. Well, we don't need a motion if nobody disagrees. We're just gonna allow, we're gonna allow for just general questions on the, on the mill levy. Are there any other changes or adjustments to tonight's agenda? Richie Nordstrom. Richie.
Coming up. Thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to make sure the item, emergency item for the Journey Museum was on the agenda.
Yes, thank you. We... Find the wording. We have an emergency declaration for the Journey Museum HVAC system estimated cost not to exceed $50,000. And we will put that under... Make that... Item 49A. We'll do it after the Public Works Committee items. Item 49A. Is that agreeable?
Thank you.
Anything else? We have motion to approve the agenda. Motion by Laurenti, second by Lewis, to approve the agenda with the change in additions noted. All in favor say aye. Opposed, motion carries. We do not have any awards and recognitions tonight, so we'll proceed directly to general public comment. We have one general public comment speaker request form, and we'll go to Stephanie Wire. And the topic is backyard hens. Stephanie, the floor is yours. Good evening.
Good evening, council. Good evening, Mayor. You remember us, I'm sure. I don't need to bring that up again. We have, we were requested by the council, the last time we spoke before you, to go ahead and start educating the public on our cause, which is to pass the city ordinance allowing backyard hens. So, beginning in April 2013, we started a Facebook page. That was our very beginning. We are currently to date at 443 likes from local citizens that have been hosting giveaways and educating the public through our Facebook page. We had a booth at the Pumpkin Festival downtown Rapid City where we informed people about our cause. Had many people ask if there was a petition that they could sign. Of course, we don't have one yet. That was in November, November 15th. We hosted an event called Hens on Ice on January 24th. The ice rink was closed that day, but we did, because of the warm temperatures, wish we had those today. Instead, we greeted the public in Main Street Square and did some informational things on chickens and passing that ordinance. The following day, we had a public forum and Q and A at the Rapid City Public Library. We had an increase in attendance there from what we really thought it would be. It was a beautiful day outside, and we had a lot of people show up for that. It was very successful, and we plan to host another one in March. We hosted a luncheon for the city council members and city employees on January 24th at noon. Bonnie Peterson and Jerry Wright were in attendance, and we appreciate that. Ken Stankin from the Sustainability Committee was also there. We are planning, we have several things coming up. We have an informational booth at Chocopalooza. It's this Thursday at the Doll from 4:00 to 8:00 p.m. We'd welcome you to come down to that. We'll have an informational booth and table at Chick Days at Runnings. That is the second weekend of April, April 12th and 13th. We're gonna have another Hens on Ice event February 15th at 2:00 p.m. down at Main Street Square, hoping for a little bit cooler weather that day. We've solicited and obtained support from other businesses in town. The Bread Root, the Wild Strawberry Market, and Eclipse have supported our cause in and through Facebook. We, they display our phrase, our flyers and our brochures readily at their front counters. We're working currently with Dakota Rural Action, the Sustainability Committee, and the Black Hills Poultry Society to align our causes. This is just a side note, but 705 cities that I can find in the United States have adopted a similar ordinance that we're hoping to get passed within the coming year. None of them have overturned that ordinance out of the 705 that I could find. That didn't count South Dakota ordinances. South Dakota wasn't even listed in the, in the amounts of ordinances that were, were listed. So, that's our update. We hope to be able to provide you with some more updates, and the swell is a-coming. We're hoping for a big ground swell this year.
Thank you very much, Stephanie, for that update. We do not have any additional speaker request forms for general public comment. Have I missed anyone? Have I missed anyone? I'll come to you, Jackie, on, when we get to the items. On, on general public comment, if you have a topic on anything not on the agenda, now is the time. Okay? We'll now move on to public comment on items 1 through 43. Public comment is now open on items 1 through 43. We do have our county auditor Julie Pearson here to stand by for questions on item 34. And we'll wait till we get to, to that, that item, because that will be pulled, and we can have a Q and A with, with her at that time. So, we'll now go on to item 37. Melissa Forster is here to speak on item number 37. Item 37 is resolution of support for Rapid City Good Samaritan Low Income Housing Project.
Hello.
Good evening.
Good evening, council. Good evening, Mayor. I'm Melissa Forster. I am a development consultant from the Good Samaritan Society's National Campus in Sioux Falls. And I just wanted to give a little update on the Rapid City project. I know that we talked about it last year. We are reapplying this year for 50 units of affordable housing for those 62 and older. This will be a congregate care facility. It means that there will be light services and an optional meal. Of those 50 units, 40 of them will be one bedrooms, and 10 of them will be two bedrooms. I did some research on Rapid City, and it was really interesting. There's only 110 units of elderly restricted Lytec or affordable housing, low-income housing tax credit units in Rapid. So, the need for this project is really big, and we're hoping that the state will see that as well and award us this year. Our units will serve those 30, 40, and 50, and 60% AMI, so it meets a broad variety of people. Our units will include ranges, fridges, microwaves, and dishwashers. We'll have limited access entries, referral services, optional meal, an onsite manager, an intercom system, several community spaces, including a fitness room, a library, resident lounges, wireless, and personal emergency response systems. I thank you for your support. Do you have any questions for me?
We'll do the questions later if that item is pulled at this time.
Perfect, perfect. Yeah, thank you.
It's for public comment, so... We'll now go to item number 39. Item 39, we'll recognize Jackie Iago from the Native Sun News. And item 39, for those watching, is the RFP for publishing, to the, award the RFP for publishing to the Rapid City Journal based on circulation and public, publication frequency. Good evening, Jackie.
Good evening. It's nice to see all of you here on a nice snowy evening. My name is Jackie Iago. I am the general manager of Native Sun News. And as you know, we are a Native American publication that has gone, we will be starting our sixth year in business in April. We were the largest growing weekly newspaper, the second year that we were in business. So, right now, we are the largest weekly in the state. But we're talking about Rapid City area to have portion of the minutes, not all of them. We've never come in saying we wanted to take the minutes from the Rapid City Journal, because they are a daily. We are a weekly. What we are trying to do for the Native American readers that read our paper from page to page is to be more involved in the community with getting the minutes from the city so that they know what is going to impact them for education, political things that are happening. Any of the legal notices that would come in that would benefit them on education, deaths, property, things that maybe take over, things like that. I had gotten a letter this, today on my email, and it was talking about the circulation of what we have. We print about 1,000 papers per week in the city, not saying where we go for the rest of the state, but in the city. With that, we have a pass along ratio of at least six readers per paper, and we know this from our elders. That's why we don't do coupons in our publication, because they refuse to cut them and not have that paper for the rest of the family. With that, that gives us a week-long shelf life, which is awesome, because it is read from cover to cover. In that, we are guestimating that we have about 8,500 readers per week. Even though we're a small publication, you've got to remember, the reason that we have Native American Day is because of a publisher that challenged Governor Mickelson back in the day, from Columbus Day to Native American Day, that's sitting in this room with me right now. Small papers have large voices, and that's what we want the city to know, that Native Americans want to be part of this community. We didn't come in asking for everything. What we want is a liaison or a bridge to be able to bring the Native Americans and the Anglos closer together in a small community that we all love. Anybody have any questions for me?
When we get to that item, there'll be an opportunity to ask questions.
Thank you.
We do not have any additional speaker request forms for items 1 through 43. Have I missed anyone? Have I missed anyone? Public comment is now closed for that section. We are now on consent items 1 through 43. Any council members or staff who'd like to remove items for separate consideration, please hit your lights. We'll first go to Alderman Richie Nordstrom. Richie.
Thank you, Mayor. Item 37, please. 37.
Item 37. Amanda Scott.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to pull item number 7, 10, 18, 29, 34, 38, and 39, please.
7, 10, 18, 29, 34, 37, 38, and 39 have been pulled. Is there any, are there any other items? Seeing none, do we have a motion to approve items 1 through 43 with the exception of 7, 10, 18, 29, 34, 37, 38, 39? We have a motion by Scott and a second by Nordstrom. All in favor say aye. Opposed, motion carries. We are on... Item number 7. We'll go to our Public Works Chairman, Alderman Nordstrom.
Thank you, Mayor. I, let me see, get a little closer here. Item number 7 is confirm the appointments of Jody Speck and Doug Jones to the Historic Preservation Commission. And I move to approve.
Motion by Nordstrom and a second by Laurenti. Amanda Scott.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm in support of this, but attached to this item is a memo that you had written dated December 31st. And I just wanted to go ahead and give you the opportunity to explain why you chose to appoint these positions, alternate one and alternate two, when your memo attached to it says that you weren't gonna do that.
I changed my mind. Based on recommendation from staff.
And, sorry, Mayor, I'm gonna let you expound on it by clarifying what you also told me, and that is, you were originally gonna wait to make these appointments, because we're waiting for some decisions from the state Historic Preservation Board, and it may be a while. And so, in order to facilitate making sure that there's a quorum at the meetings, you wanted to go ahead and appoint the alternates one and two.
You've summarized that well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. It was just confusing to me. I just wanted clarification on it. Thank you. I yield the floor.
Any further discussion on item 7? Motion is for approval. All in favor say aye. Opposed, motion carries. We are now on item number 10.
Thank you, Mayor. Item 10 is to authorize the mayor and finance officer to sign right-of-way agreement for a permanent utility easement for Mount Rushmore Road reconstruction project, and I move to approve.
Motion by Nordstrom, second by Laurenti, and we'll go to Amanda Scott. Amanda.
Thank you, Mayor. May I ask Mr. Wolsterstorff a couple of questions concerning this?
You may.
Thank you. Terry, if you wouldn't mind, I, I know that this is a permanent easement, and it's, the property itself remains with the owner, and it looks like this amount was for a very, very small piece of land. Would you mind explaining, though, that it is significant to the property owner, because it's a fire hydrant and there are restrictions as far as not parking within that spot or a certain area?
Thank, thank you. It, it is a rather small easement footprint, but it is important for two reasons. One, it creates a location for a fire hydrant. The second part, like you mentioned, there are some restrictions that go with that. Although we don't own the land, because it's just an easement, it does restrict some of the use there. No longer gonna be able to utilize it for parking, that type of thing. So, although it's not a acquisition of right-of-way, it, it really acts in the same way.
And thank you. I just know, I know in my mind, $4,000 or anything over $4,000 seemed excessive until you really understand that it is restricting that, that parcel of land. Thank you. I yield the floor.
Any further discussion on item 10? Motion is for approval. All in favor say aye. Opposed, motion carries. Item 18. We'll go to our legal and finance chairman and a Broncos fan, Chad Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. Baron, for the clarification. Actually, I'm not a Broncos fan. I'm a Cowboys fan. My son's a Broncos fan, so... Anyway, item number 18 is an acknowledging, acknowledge, excuse me, Capital Improvement Programs Committee Monthly Update for January 2014. I move approval.
We have motion for approval or acknowledgement. Do we have a second? We have a second by Scott, and we'll go to Amanda Scott.
Thank you, Mayor. May I ask Mr. Wolsterstorff a couple of questions concerning the CIP minutes?
You may.
Thank you. Terry, I, I was not able to attend this meeting, and so I was just trying to play catch-up on reading through the minutes. And it seems to me that, that the minutes contained a discussion concerning the reporting of these projects. And it just resonated with me that when I was on the CIP committee last year, we kind of had the same discussion about trying to get a report that shows us the encumbrances of major projects, because it really looks like, when you pull this up, there's a lot of free-floating money out there that the city could be utilizing. And I know you have stated several times that is not the case.
Terry.
Thank you, Mayor. One of the changes we made last year when that topic first came up was we added a, a section on our CIP reports. It's called notes, but it, it kind of lets you know where we are in the process. And what you'll find as you go through that, it may look as though we have a lot of unspent money sitting in the CIP, but a lot of it is, is either earmarked or has already been spent. Some cases, we're waiting for billing to come from the Department of Transportation. A lot of times, we're either in design or we're under contract. So, that's what we added. I know there's been some requests to actually have a more detailed kind of encumbrances report to show exactly what's encumbered. Keep in mind that, that won't necessarily, if we're currently in design or getting close to going out to bid, it may not show that it's encumbered. So, it may look like we still have money available there for other projects, but I don't know if really an encumbrances report is gonna solve that whole problem, but I, I think it's something we can probably generate.
Well, it looked like, according to the minutes, that there was supposed to be a new revamped form coming forth in March. Is that correct?
We have our new CIP list, although it doesn't usually come out in March. So, I'll have to go back and look at my notes and remember exactly what I committed to, I guess.
Well, yeah, and I'm, and I'm just asking, because I, like I said, I was on there last year, and I know any type of extra clarity we can get. But I know the encumbrances are always very important to the city council, as we're trying to understand, you know, exactly where we are as far as a benchmark goes. But in the CIP minutes, the way I read it, and if you wouldn't mind, you can always follow up with me later, too, but it did look as if you and your staff had committed to coming up with a new report, so...
Then we will.
All right, thank you. And then, sorry, Mayor, may I also ask Mr. Jeff Bigler a question?
You may.
Concerning the CIP minutes, sorry, Jeff. I knew I saw you come in tonight. And then, Jeff, if you could, the, the minutes really didn't explain why you're utilizing Parks and Rec CIP money for software. Could you just explain why the software for the cemetery is coming out of?
Yes. There was a, a line item in our, our Parks and Rec CIP for cemetery master plan. And part of that master plan is going to be to upgrade the software system at the cemetery. So, we just broke that out into a separate line item, so it was a little more visible. That's a, a software that's going to be purchased relatively soon. So, we wanted to make sure that that was, was called out in that report.
And did you pull this from funds that were no longer gonna be utilized? Because I know the CIP committee itself had, had tried to loosen it up and allow the department directors to kind of handle these smaller amount items in order to not have to come back for that specific approval.
Well, correct. We won't exceed the amount that was set aside in that line item for the cemetery.
All right. Thank you, Jeff, for that explanation. I yield the floor.
Any further discussion on this item? Richie Nordstrom.
Thank you, Mayor. A comment or a question for Mr. Wolsterstorff, please? If I may?
May.
Thank you. Mr. Wolsterstorff, on the CIP reports that you're generating currently, I just wanted to say thank you very much for the comments section that we have incorporated on it. It does clarify a lot of the projects and where they're at. And just, just from what I recall of that CIP committee meeting, your target date was for March. And if it couldn't be met by then, you were gonna try to get it for April for us, for sure. And if, you're welcome to make a comment on that.
Terry.
I'm reading the minutes right now. We'll, we'll work on the report. I should be able to get something to you guys by March.
And, Mayor, if I may ask one more question of Mr. Wolsterstorff. Is that, Terry, if I understand it correctly, that essentially what we're looking for and trying to attempt to get to, and I totally understand the billing process and the lag time that's involved in that, but primarily what I'm looking for on that specific report is in March or April, is that the projects that are in the pipeline, we understand that's being taken care of, but what we're interested in, or at least I'm interested in, is the projects that are a little bit behind or we're waiting some, for some issues to be resolved, and then they'll be put into the pipeline, such as obtaining right-of-way and, and issues of that nature. But essentially, that's what I'm kind of looking for, is the money that is currently, as you described it, is earmarked.
I, I think we can accommodate that in some, some form.
Thank you. I'll yield the floor.
Terry, do you plan on bringing this back to Public Works, or what is your...
We would just bring it through, through the CIP committee.
CIP? All right. Any further discussion on this item? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. We are now on item number 34. Chad, I'm sorry, 29, I missed 29.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I sure missed Amanda. Authorize staff to accept 2013 Department of Homeland Security grants in the amount of $67,512, and authorize the mayor and finance officer to sign the reimbursement terms and conditions of the agreement. I move approval.
We have a motion by Lewis and a second by Scott, and we'll go to Alderman and Amanda Scott. Amanda.
Thank you, Mayor. If you wouldn't mind, I'd like to give Chief Maltevern an opportunity to expound on this grant, and because it actually, from what he explained to me, is that it's our local Rapid City response units, but they actually cover a much wider area. So, Mayor, if you would indulge me and...
We'll go to our fire chief, Mike Maltevern.
Thank you, Mayor. And Amanda, thank you for the question. Give you an overview real quick of what this grant does for Rapid City and really the, the county, as well as the state of South Dakota. These are actually federal funds that, through the Department of Homeland Security, they're allocated to each state in the United States. And what that does is allow each state to better prepare for responses, emergency responses to acts of terrorism, other things like building collapses and, you know, large disasters like floods and tornadoes and such. So, one of the objectives of that money, again, is to prepare the communities. But in South Dakota, what we've done is to chunk the state up into four of these regional response teams. Three of those are in eastern South Dakota. That's all based on population. And then, we have one for western South Dakota, which Rapid City Fire Department was best qualified and capable to basically take on that task with our existing staff and resources. So, state, the feds and the state funnel money through the Rapid City Fire Department to bolster this regional response team concept. And with our team in the fire department, we have a hazardous materials response team. We have a technical rescue response team, and also water response, water, water, excuse me, water rescue response team for incidents that are, again, a low-frequency, high-risk event. Example was the vehicle that had gone through the pond the other day. Our water rescue team responded to that. The flooding as a result of Winterstorm Atlas was our water rescue team. Our hazmat team travels all throughout the state for different events and incidents. So, this particular equipment today, there's some equipment, there's some training, and also kind of the, the cool little thing kind of hidden in this particular grant is the fire department is getting a rescue dog. Similar to you see, like you saw in the World Trade Center, you saw these rescue dogs doing searches throughout the rubble pile at the World Trade Center. We're gonna now have a, an urban search and rescue dog here in the fire department, and the dog's name is Cisco. And he was born in Connecticut to a handler of, of these type of rescue dogs. We purchased the dog as a puppy. His training has now begun in New Hampshire. They go through several months of training, and then, once we get the dog in our possession, it's certified as a urban search and rescue dog. There's only just a few dozen around the country assigned to some of the largest search and rescue teams. So, then we've handpicked a firefighter to be the handler. So, then the, the handler firefighter goes off for several weeks of training with the dog. And similar like you see, the law enforcement has a couple of different dogs in their staff. We'll have a rescue dog. And the two, I guess, functions within organizations actually work together. Our dog can backup law enforcement dogs in terms of searching for people and that kind of stuff. So, pretty exciting for the fire department. It really bolsters our capabilities to response to, respond to, again, those maybe once-in-a-lifetime events where you have a building collapse or something like that. So, it's a very, very technical tool for us to have something like that, and we're pretty pleased. Again, is good for the city, good for the region, and certainly good for the state, so, thank you.
Thank you, chief, and thank you for, for letting us... Thank you, Chief, and thank you for letting us all know about that. The dog is new. I hadn't even heard that until tonight. So, I like the idea of knowing that we have those capabilities, and I'm really praying that we never have to use them. So, thank you.
We'll go to Alderman Bill Clayton.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a question for Chief Mike, if I may. Chief, once the firefighter is through with his training along with the dog and then comes back home, is he or she able then to pass on some of that training so that it's not just a one-deep position and there's other people to augment those duties?
Thank you. Yeah, typically, you'll get about a 10-year career out of one of these dogs. So, it's a huge commitment on the part of the handler. It's not just something that they come to work and they're the handler of that particular rescue dog, like we see in the police department. Those two are a team. That dog will actually live at the handler's home. We make accommodations for that dog to live at the handler's home and all that. There is some, we will build in some redundancies. However, the breeders and the people that train and certify the dogs really warn you about having multiple handlers because it confuses the dog and then lessens the quality of that dog's capability. So, we will have some backups and some redundancies, but basically, if that firefighter is on vacation, the dog's on vacation for the most part. But, yeah, there is some of that, and that dog can be sent off. If this particular employee was to be injured on the job or resign or retire or anything, there is an opportunity to go train another handler and send the dog and the handler off and really kind of get a second life out of the dog, if you will.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion on item number 29? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item 34. Chad.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number 34 is a resolution to dissolve tax increment district number 41 and move approval.
We have a motion by Lewis to approve and a second by Scott. And we had some questions, so if our auditor, Julie Pearson, could come on up, and we'll turn the floor over to Amanda Scott. Amanda.
Thank you, Mayor. And hello, Julie, and thank you for coming and educating us this evening. And Mayor, I also want to thank you. I know you're the one that extended the request to have Julie come and visit us tonight. Julie, as I'm forever trying to understand the process of taxes and the TIDs and the property taxes and everything else, one of the questions that came up is that this item dissolves a tax increment district number 41. But our chief financial officer stated that there was an overlap with another tax increment district number 71. I think it's 71. And so, I got confused because is one subordinate to the other one, and so all the monies collected in that tax increment district was used to pay off 41, and now we begin to pay off for 71? Or how does that work when you have an overlapping tax increment district? If I may?
Go ahead, Julie.
Thank you for the question. Julie Pearson, Pennington County Auditor. TIDs are quite confusing to all levels, so you're not alone in this. Tax increment district 41 has different boundaries than tax increment district 71. However, some of the property in tax increment district 41 does overlap into 71. When you dissolve one tax increment district, any portion that lies within the boundaries of another tax increment district, those properties then go into the base value of that secondary tax increment district, which will be 71. In the process that was, I don't know if it was approved, but the process that we use is the first TID is paid off first. So, all of the base value for 41 was set at the time it was incurred. And then, all the increments have been used in 41 to pay off the debt for 41. All the expenses have been allocated for 41. That is the reason it is dissolved. In a mid-year dissolution is this, the property that is in 41 will be, has a new base for 71 because it was approved at a different date. When you do an increment district or approve an increment district, the base values, the values of the property, at the time you form that tax increment district, consider the base, and the taxes that are levied against the increment value are what are used to pay off the debt. So, now that 41 is paid off, those parcels will go now into the new base value, or, excuse me, the base value that they were levied at, at the time of the approval of district, tax increment district 71. And it's in a ratio basis. So, if 71, as it sits, has a million dollars in value, and you bring in the parcels from 41, only those parcels in 41 that are inside the boundaries of 71, you add those to it and you create a new ratio. The portion of 41 that is no longer in any tax increment district, those taxes now revert back to the founding government. You would pay a city, the city portion will go to the city, the school will go to the schools, county, and the water district. So, it's a split. When we actually prepare our tax levies or our valuations for 2014 paying 2015, that is all automatically calculated out. But in a mid-year like this, it's frankly just a manual process, and we get it as close as we can.
Okay. So, and just for clarification then, so when tax increment district number 71 is created, the base for the properties that intersect 41 and 71 were valued at that base level when 71 was created, but the monies that have incrementally affected those properties have been used to pay off 41, not 71 yet?
Yes.
Am I understanding that correctly?
Yes, you are.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Julie. And then, Mayor, I had a couple other questions concerning the city's taxation, and you, we adopted this, that you'll give me some latitude here?
Are there any other questions on the TIF before we shift gears slightly? Amanda, go ahead.
Thank you. And Julie, going through the city's process of the budgeting, I'm trying to understand it. I've lived in some other states before, and in the past, when it came to property tax levies, I was used to the setup that the mill levy stayed the same, and as properties changed in value, the same mill levy got applied. So, if the overall property value as a whole increased, the entity, taxing entity, saw growth in their tax dollars in order to spend for services. But it was explained to me during our budget services that that's, that doesn't, it's not the way the city of Rapid City does it, that basically, we set the budget, and then we send some type of document to the county saying, "This is what we need for our budget." But there's a restriction that we can't take the CPI unless we vote on it or whatever. And so, we chose not to take the CPI. And then, I asked, because I know the valuations throughout Pennington County in general raised 8% as, on average. I know mine did personally. And so, I raised the question back then, and I'm trying to understand this, that the valuations went up, and it was explained to me that if the property valuations for property taxation within the city limits of Rapid City went up, the mill levy would actually go down because we were setting it based on budget, not the growth of the assessed value. And so, I'm really confused on this because I know the mill levy for the city actually increased from last year to this year.
Julie.
If I may. It is all a math thing. If, the way the property tax laws are in South Dakota, is that it's a mill levy dollar. It's a tax dollar freeze, not a mill levy freeze. So, which is the biggest misconception that I would say people, even boards and legislators, misunderstand. So, what you can increase your max tax, which is the maximum that you've levied the year before, if we take storing CPI aside, you can grow that dollar amount by the percent of growth of new construction, rezoning of certain types of property. And that is applied against the last year's levy. So, you get a percent, and say that percent of growth is 2% of last year's value. You apply that to how many tax dollars the city levied last year, and you get a 2% or whatever that percent is, increase to the tax dollars. Has nothing to do with the value that you currently are going to levy that against. We cannot gain, under the tax statutes of South Dakota, on revalued property. So, if the assessor's office, if our assessor's office goes out and revalues a neighborhood and the property values go up, we cannot gain as any government on that revalued dollars, only on the growth. But again, the growth is compared to last year's value. So, and then you can apply the CPI, which is granted to us by the state, which, of course, even if your value stayed the same from one year to the next, and you applied a CPI, your mill levy will grow up. However, your values never stay the same. But because the cost of, excuse me, because the growth is compared against last year's value, you have to compare that amount to the growth of the new value to create a frozen levy. So, what the city needs to do if they want to ultimately freeze their levy, is do very similar to what the county does, and you kind of have to work your process backwards. First of all, you need a solid valuation figure from the county. And that just is not going to happen until into October, which you already have to have your levy request and your budgets approved. So, we're working with, and there are several reasons for this, but those lay aside. So, you're always working with a moving target on value. We don't get utility values till at the end of August, first part of September. They affect the growth. They affect the value of the entire city of Rapid City. So, the figures that we give to Pauline to make her estimates, to the council, they come from our initial setup in March when the tax, excuse me, the assessment notices go out. And then we'll have, you'll have city boards, we'll have county boards. We don't print an abstract or summarize those totals in between until we are ready to prepare for state boards. Anything that you decide, as well as the county or township, can go to the state for reevaluation or a different decision. Once those come, all the counties across the state have to prepare a new abstract. Once that is done, through a magical formula that I can't repeat or even calculate, the Department of Revenue is charged with averaging the values across the state to 85% of market. Who knows? We try to get very close, and we manipulate that figure for estimates. There just isn't any way we're going to get it until we get that finer factor from the state, and that comes after. Both you and the county, all the other districts have set their budget. What the county has done, when they want to not only store CPI or use a certain amount of CPI and all the growth dollars, because you can store CPI, you can't store growth. So, we always want to use your growth dollars if you're going to use them first, is when they, when we make the motion at the county level to approve our budget, we have revenues, we have our budget expenses, and we have miscellaneous revenues, which is anything but current property tax, and I don't know, I've not looked at your budget, we use cash surplus to balance that out. In addition to approving both the revenues and the budget and the cash amount of surpluses, the board made an additional condition on approving our budget that we would freeze our levy, which protected us from freezing our levy. And the difference it made was about $300,000 more that we had to take out of cash surplus to freeze the levy to expand the budget that they had approved with the amount of property taxes at a frozen levy with the amount of miscellaneous revenues that we have. That's how far off our initial estimate from the state of that equalization factor. So, you're never going to be able to do it during a September cycle. It would be nice, but then they'd have to give us longer to approve our budgets, they'd have to give us longer to get our work done. We're only given a month to do it, and that's almost an impossibility for the counties across the state, especially when we overlap with three other, four other counties. So, that's kind of how, it's all, it's all a mathematical thing, and how much you're requesting compared to the percentage of growth from one year to the other, which your growth figure is compared to one of those factors.
Okay. So, Julie, just for clarification then, so going forward, just trying to clear up some of this misconception then, when we talk about growth then, and it becomes a percentage against the value of the property tax, even without taking the CPI then, if we have high growth, most likely taxpayers are going to see an increase, and it's not the CPI.
Maybe. It depends, because the percentage of growth has to be calculated against last year's taxable value. But then, when you apply it to the new values, your percentages, you can't match. If you have a 2% growth, which is new construction only compared to last year's value, in your revalued dollars, in your new value, you have revalued dollars, and you have all of your growth. And they never match because you're using only half of the portion of the formula to see how much your levy would increase.
Okay.
You can't say if the growth is 2% and the change in value is only 2%, that you'll be the same. It doesn't work because you're working with two different numbers.
No, but if, so let me just use that big-picture thinking, but if the growth is 2% and the revaluation is not considered, your property tax, property taxpayers are going to see an increase?
Sometimes. And it's because of how much your revalued dollars happen, and it depends upon the whole value of the county and how close we are to market when you actually levy a request against the new value. As well as, you can't say, in general, taxpayers, because each individual piece of property does not go up the average. So, a piece of property for me may have gone up 15% individually, and for you, it maybe only went up one. You're not going to see a property tax increase, even if the mill levy goes up, I'm going to see a huge one. So, that's why, in generalities, it's hard to say taxpayers won't see a tax increase, even if your mill levy is frozen, because you're applying it against new values that have revaluation amounts in them, as well as different growth amounts.
Okay. And that's kind of where I was going with this, is because it just seems like whether the city decides to take the CPI, whether the city has growth, high growth, low growth, or whatever, sometimes the mill levy goes down, majority of the time, the mill levy goes back up again. And what you've just described kind of explains it, is because as we grow as a city, we're going to see increases in our property taxes, generally.
As a whole, yes.
Yep. All right. Thank you, Julie.
Julie, a quick question while you're here. Is there a way to figure out, going back to the TIF, is there a way to figure out how much of 41 is not part of 71, and then determine how much is freed up for our budget? Is there any way to guess at that?
Right now? No. We, when we, when you dissolve a TID, when we get that information, and we sit down, we pull a property list from 41, we have the base values of 71, we throw them in, and we figure a percentage that will now come... we figure a percentage that will now come as free money to the, to the city because it's a miscellaneous tax, it's a dissolved TID tax that you haven't counted on, nor have we, all the entities get that. And then the portion that would go to TIF 71. We can report that on any TIF once we get those values determined and what the new ratio is.
So we would probably know then how much is freed up probably by May, by the time we do our budget?
Oh yeah. Because if you dissolve it today, we have to use that for portioning taxes in February paid in March. We have to have it figured out with the portioning in March. So by early, mid-March, we have to have it figured out. And I can certainly have Lori forward that information to you and Pauline both.
Thank you. Because that's a significant TIF in terms of how much it was generating annually. I think it was, what, a million dollars?
Yes, there, that, the TIF 41 that overlaps into 71 is the new Walmart area. Part of 41 also includes a lot of residential houses in the, on the map on the left and up north. So I don't know what the differences in values that will go to, back to the governments versus that that'll actually turn into 71. Parts of 71 and 41 is a big area that frankly has no development in it.
Thank you. We'll go to Richie Nordstrom. Richie?
Thank you, Mayor. And I'll probably add some confusion to this. Thank you for coming in tonight, Julie. Appreciate your time and effort to kind of explain this to me. Have you got a, an idea on the overlap portion of 41 and 71? Approximately percentage wise, how much they overlap?
I have a map of what they overlap, but I don't know dollars.
Don't have a dollar map?
The TIFs are not in a taxing district code that we can just go in and pull, pull up. So what we have to do is we have to manually run property lists and we have to determine what the base value of the properties in 41 were when 71 was formed so we can create an accurate increment.
Thank you, Julie.
And it's a total manual process.
And just to make sure that I'm kind of understanding this, I have to put this into a picture form for me. Essentially, it's like a three-story building, adding 41 and 71 together. So let me rewind and explain a little bit. We've got our base, so we have our foundation for, for everything that's out there. Then when 41 comes online, we're building essentially a two-story building. Then as 41 is getting established, we come in, the city and county establish TID District 71. So in its essence, what it's mounting to, we're building on additional stories. So as an example to this building, building, adding stories three and four on it with addition of 71. So we're starting off with, for example, 71 as an example, I'm not saying this is correct, but 71 would be starting off at story two. Does that make sense? So we're raising the base on 41 to two stories, to whatever that value is, and then we're adding TID 71. And then that raises the value, stories three and four. Yes. Am I close to being correct on saying that?
If, if I may, partially.
Okay.
Except for 41 has to have a wing over here.
Yes.
And 71 has a wing over here and that part of 41 that isn't in the straight-up building will now go back to the taxpayers. That's what TIDs are meant to do. And the part of the building that is in 41 started at the ceiling of 41, which is now the base of 71, in the building, that all goes to 71.
Yes.
Yet the wing over here on 71 is still in 71 and so it goes to pay off the debt.
Understanding. That's why I brought up the initial question.
Kind of a crazy looking building.
Yes, it is. Yes, it is. And that's why I was bringing up the initial question is percentage wise, how much were we overlapping? And the wing of the building is a good metaphor for trying to describe what I was trying to get at. The next part of it is, is it possible to get some more training on what you're talking about, the tax evaluation, mill levies, et cetera? Maybe the rest of the council doesn't need it, but I do. And primarily because we're getting ready to do our appeal process, I'm going to say it's in March, and I'd like to get a little more basis of where we're going, what we're trying to do and the confusion that's getting added to all of this. And especially helping me throughout the sometimes portion of the answers and then the maybe, is that, could you do that training for us or is that somebody else that gets to do that?
Quit laughing, Pauline.
Because my head was starting to hurt when you started.
If I could interject here, I think it might be wise to have our finance officer and county auditor have a visit about, about some of the questions that are coming up and rather continue this tonight. We have allowed for a great amount of leeway, but I, I think it'd be wise to bring this to a, a future meeting, perhaps closer to budget where this can be fully explained. Is that fair?
That's very fair.
All right. Pauline?
I just wanted to point out that according to what the county sent me late into 2013, we should get approximately $1.6 million on TID 41. That's what was supposed to be collected if the TID was not dissolved to go towards the debt. So part of that will come to TID 71, but then the rest will go back to the taxing entities. And then I just wanted a clarification and maybe this could have probably waited, but when the TIDs are dissolved, do they go back into the growth calculation or do they go into the base calculation when you give me my numbers for next year's budget?
The portion of 41 that isn't in 71, when a TID is dissolved, is considered growth. But see, it won't be growth until, because November 1st, 2013 is for 14, pay 15, you probably won't see it until 15, pay 16 because of the assessment date.
Any further discussion on this item? Thank you very much, Julie, for coming.
Anytime.
All in favor of item 34, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We'll now go to item number 37.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First time I've ever been thankful for ADD. Item number 37 is Resolution Number 2014-014 for support of the Rapid City Good Samaritan Low Income Housing Project and I move approval.
Motion by Lewis, second by Wright, and we'll first go to Alderman, Richie Nordstrom.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a keen interest in this project and I would applaud the Good Samaritan folks for bringing this project forward and hopefully, and I wish you well on the process that you have to go through on the, on the state level now, this is the next step. And I feel very confident that you'll be able to make it through. Now, Melissa, is that, was that you I was emailing with and exchanging emails? Thank you. Great questions and hopefully we were able to provide the information that you needed for that. Terrific. Thank you. I'll yield the floor.
Any further discussion on item 37? Motion is for approval. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We are now on item number 38.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number 38 is authorize the mayor and finance officer to sign assignment of the proceeds of the real estate purchase agreement by Dakota Heartland Inc. to the city of Rapid City and I move approval.
Motion by Lewis, second by Scott, and we'll go to Amanda Scott.
Thank you, Mayor. May I just ask Pauline Sumption a couple of questions, please?
You may.
Pauline, just for clarification, because it's not listed on the summary, but I found it interesting because when you first read the summary page, it looks like this is a brand-new loan. And actually what you indicated to me is that, no, this is, this is well being paid off and this is not the first payment. Could you just give us a little bit more explanation on what's going on?
Thank you, Ms. Scott. This was actually a $1.8 million IDPF loan and there's a balance of about a million dollars right now. And once Mr. Estes sells this property and the proceeds that are signed, I believe it's about $280,000 that the city will get, which is about $250,000, I believe, in principal and about $30,000, give or take, in interest that's been accruing.
And this will take this down to, I think the estimate was right around $800,000? And is there a time limit on when the, when the whole thing has to be paid back or it just incrementally as it keeps going?
The way that the, the agreements have been written in the past were that they had interest-free up until five years after substantial completion. After the five years of substantial completion, then the interest started accruing at one plus prime, which is four and a quarter percent right now is their total interest being charged. And then after 10 years after substantial completion, they are required to pay in full whether it's all been platted out or not.
And do you have a rough idea when that date is, just out of curiosity?
Pauline, if you need some more time, we can probably continue this item and.
Ten years, actually, August of this year.
Oh, it's August of this year?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. I'll yield the floor.
All right. Any further discussion on this item, on item 38? We'll go to Brad Estes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just, I should probably abstain from this since I'm related to the party concerned in this. Thanks.
Very good. All in favor of item 38, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. One abstention from Brad Estes. Thank you, everyone. We are now on item number 39. Chad Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number 39 is award the RFP for publishing to the city of Rapid, to the Rapid City Journal, excuse me, based on circulation and publication frequency and I move approval.
We have a motion by Lewis and a second by Nordstrom to approve item number 39 as listed, and we'll go to Amanda Scott.
Thank you, Mayor. Did you want to let Pauline go first or, because I was just going to ask a question of you and Pauline or you or Pauline?
Pauline, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to point out that on Friday I had Charlene attach memo to this item as well. It was not attached for the legal and finance committee, but we currently already do some publication with the Native Sun News such as job advertisements. I believe there is some, our election notices are put in there and then possibly some community development notices as well. And those types of things will more than likely continue to happen. So just because you, if you choose to just have the legal newspaper be the Rapid City Journal, it does not stop us from putting some items in the Native Sun News.
And thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Pauline, because that was exactly going to be my question. From what I understand that we heard from Jackie earlier today is that they weren't looking to be the one and only legal paper. They were just looking to get the notices and notifications that were pertinent to their readership. And my question to Pauline and the mayor or either or of you is, we would continue to do that as a city in order to reach that publication or reach that circulation that we're trying to reach for pertinent information.
If I might. There are some notices that more than likely will not go into the Native Sun News depending on timing. There's public hearings that with the weekly newspaper, it would delay the process, possibly three weeks, depending on if we have a fifth Monday in that month or not. So those probably will still go into the Rapid City Journal. I hesitate to pick and choose what types of minutes would go in there. If, you know, Jackie indicated earlier, they would like some of the council minutes, but I don't feel that I am qualified to determine what is important to their readership. And so I would not feel comfortable in, in doing that. Typically, outside of the job advertisements, it's been up to the department directors and their division managers where they do their legal advertising, their, their notices, that type of thing. And I would, I would think that it would continue in that manner.
Mayor, did you have?
May I? Couple of things. First of all, there's three options that were linked to the, to tonight's, this, tonight's agenda item for consideration. Option, option one, which is the option that I prefer, is the option to continue to have Rapid City Journal be the, the official newspaper of record and then to publish anything we can in the Native Sun News that doesn't result in a delay of a, of an item. For example, business licenses, development applications, items that are, that are planning commission items, items that are, that are time sensitive. But that being said, we could still publish the, the minutes and a fair number of other items in the Native Sun News. Even if, and that would require a substitute motion. Right now, if this motion is approved, item number three, or option number three will be approved, which is to continue to proceed with things as they are now and to have the journal continue to be the newspaper of record, which I of course support continuing to do, but it wouldn't, it wouldn't provide the resources necessary to put the, the minutes in the Native Sun News, which is something that I support. Now, I, I would say this, is that if you look at the track record of, of 2009 to 2012, for example, 2010 was $366 that the city spent to publish items in the Native Sun News. In 2012, the item was, or the amount was $3,230. So we are, we are seeing, we are investing more in the Native Sun News and I think that's, and getting, getting the word out to native people and I think that that's, that's important. I understand if the council chooses not to approve option number one tonight, although I, I would support it and I hope that you would consider it. If you choose not to, what we will do is we will continue to evaluate the feasibility of, of doing option number one as part of the 2015 budget. I understand that when items come up mid-cycle, it's sometimes hard to say yes because it's not a, a budgeted expense, but it's something that we're going to, to consider. Can't make a promise that it will happen in the 2015 budget, but it's certainly on the, on the list of items to consider. So in, in closing, I would ask the council to take another look at, at option number one to continue to have the journal be the newspaper of record and then publish everything that we can that doesn't result in a time delay, also in the Native Sun News. And I, it looks like the cost of that would be approximately about $40,000. Well, it's, according to paragraph two of the memo here, if they use a six-point type instead of an eight-point type, which is the type that the journal uses, it would reduce the previously estimated cost of $55,000 by about 25%. I have nothing further at this time. Any further discussion or motion? And we'll go to Charity Doyle.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This memo hadn't been linked prior to legal and finance, so that's why I was asking the question about where the $41,000 came from. Something to consider is that this would be $41,000 for 821 papers. And I understand that the passing on the paper is a lot higher, but we don't have any actual hard data to back up what that, what that number is. I would have a hard time looking at taxpayers and saying that this is a $41,000 for reaching 821 people or subscriptions is, is justifiable at this point. But if that growth continues, as Jackie has mentioned, that the Native Sun News is the largest weekly paper and it's continuing to grow, I think that's something we, we could keep tabs on. And I know if we, if we make, continue the efforts that we have been and do reassess it at budget time, there, we can see what changes have come about in that time. Those are my comments. Thank you.
Brad Estes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was just looking at this and I was just trying to figure out if there's, no, obviously, if, if they reduce the price from the eight-point to the six-point, but then when, once you divide that legal line by 800. divide that legal line by 821 papers, and you do Rapid City Journals by 13,000, there's just a huge difference. But I was just trying to think if there's some way we could leave the door open, that if we pass the Rapid City Journal, that if the Native Sun Times could figure out how to make their font smaller, and, you know, if they got to within a certain percentage, I mean, we'd pay so much for readership. You know, I don't expect the unit price for a paper that has a 13,000 circulation, one that has an 800, that probably have the same unit cost, but if we could leave the door open to leave it up to them, that if they can make it work, that on a cost per print, we would reconsider it. Like I said, I probably didn't spend as much time as I should have today looking at this, so I'm just wondering if there's a way we could, I guess we could reconsider it. You know, but the financial gap at this point, I wouldn't be able to support, but I guess I'd like to leave the door open, that if they could do something on their end to try to narrow the gap, that we'd take another second look at publishing the minutes. Thank you.
Any further discussion on the motion? Any further discussion? Amanda Scott.
Thank you, Mayor. Just to clarify my earlier question, even if option three is passed by the city council tonight, it doesn't close the door to other notices and publications by the department. Is that correct, Pauline? So it's not an all-or-nothing thing here?
More than likely, there are some notices, I know, that are concerning to be printed in there because of the time restrictions with community planning. So I wouldn't foresee those notices being published. I wouldn't see the minutes being published, because that's a huge expense without the authorization of the council and the additional funding. Otherwise, the notices could, depending on the department director's wishes, be put in there.
Thank you. And Councilman Estes, that's the door I see opening, is I think we can continue looking, and if we can clarify the pertinent information, that the publication in the Native Sun News will reach the circulation we're trying to, I think the city is more than willing to utilize that circulation in order to get our word out. So I think the door is open, and I'm looking forward to continuing the negotiations on this and see if we can put it into the budget as needed. Thank you.
Any further discussion on the motion? Any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you, everyone. We are now on items number, items 44 through 51. Public comment is now open on 44 through 51. I do not have any speaker request forms on items 44 through 51. Have I missed anyone? Have I missed anyone? Public comment is now closed, and we will go to item number 44, and we'll go to Chad Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number 44 is a second reading, excuse me, of ordinance number 5978, supplemental appropriation number one for 2014. I move approval.
We have a motion by Lewis, second by Laurenti. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. 45.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number 45 is a second reading of ordinance number 5979, an ordinance to codify the method for calculating the general fund cash reserve balance by amendment in section 2.40, 0.140 of the Rapid City Municipal Code, and I move approval.
Motion by Lewis, second by Laurenti. Any discussion? Amanda Scott.
Thank you, Mayor. This is really the first opportunity I've had to address this issue, and I do appreciate Council President Jerry Wright expressing my concern with this. As we're trying to determine what the best percentage of reserves as our general fund grows, I just want to reiterate what Council President Jerry Wright was expressing, I believe on my behalf as well as his, because we had been in discussion. I just don't want to see money being tied up and not used as being referred to as a sacred amount that no one can touch into. I understand that it's a reserve line, it's for emergencies, but I want to make sure that we don't get blinded by the fact that there are monies available when we do have needs. So since it's a shot in the dark, I will be supporting this tonight, but I reserve the discussion to bring it back and see if we can reduce it down if we need to free up some monies. Thank you. I yield the floor.
Thank you, Amanda. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number 46.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number 46 is to confirm the appointment of Kevin Lewis to the RSVP Advisory Council, and I will be abstaining from this vote, yielding the floor. And I will inform, because he's my brother, but I will inform the committee that my brother did get the Order of the Silver Beaver, I think it's called, for the Boy Scouts the other night, so don't let that influence your decision at all. I think it's the highest award you can get as a Boy Scout. Later.
Motion by Laurenti, second by Wright, to approve item number 46. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries with one abstention from Chad Lewis. Item number 47, Chad.
Item number 47 is to the appointment of Bill Kestloff at the Compass Committee. I yield the floor.
Floor has been yielded. We have a motion to table. We have a second. We have a second. We need a second.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to table and a second. No discussion on the table in motion? No discussion on table in motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. And we'll now go to item number 48. Public Works Committee.
Thank you, Mayor. Item 48 is to authorize the staff to advertise a request for proposals to resurvey the West Boulevard Historic District, and I'll move to approve.
We have a motion by Nordstrom and a second by Amanda Scott. Any discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number 49.
Item 49 is to approve Resolution 2014-015, a construction fee resolution for Prairie Meadows subdivision for a water main oversizing project, and I move to approve.
Motion by Nordstrom, second by Scott. Any discussion? Brad Estes.
Need to abstain from this, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, so noted. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries with one abstention from Brad Estes. We are now on item number 49A. I will go ahead and read this into the record. This is an emergency declaration for the Journey Museum's HVAC system, estimated cost not to exceed $50,000, funding source CIP contingency. Is that correct, Pauline? Okay. Do we have a motion to declare the emergency?
So move.
Moves.
We have a motion by Wright and a second by Nordstrom. Any discussion? Any discussion? Steve Laurenti.
Thank you, Mayor, and I just wanted to ask, I'm not sure who to ask, but I just want to make sure that we get some report back of some, of the final of what happened there, the cost, and contractor, the whole thing. Just a final report. I don't know who, sure who to ask that, but I just want to throw that out there, that comes back to the council.
Sure that our trusty liaison to the Journey Museum Board, Richie Nordstrom, who's also allowing to speak, can address that. Richie?
Very good.
Alderman Laurenti, yes, we will have a report for you. In fact, we're still in the gathering information stage. Everything is falling apart there on this unit that we need to replace. And I'm going to guesstimate, if I may, introduce our executive director, Troy Kilpatrick, who's in the audience. Troy is still in the collecting of the data, information, and what we're going to try to do is, as soon as we get that information to us, we will provide that information to you on the council, and we need that information just so we can even pay the bills.
Very good. That's, I just wanted to check that mark off there. Thank you.
Great question.
And this is something, by the way, that Pauline didn't inform me, is covered by the MOU, correct, that this is part of the city's responsibility?
With it being part of the city-owned building, it is the city's responsibility for the infrastructure of that building. They've come to council and to CIP before for building improvements.
Charity Doyle.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Steve, we had something similar happen at the Minnaloosahahn. That's also a city-owned building, and the final numbers, everything came through CIP again, so we did have oversight and record of that. So if you'd like us to kind of forward you on that, when it comes through, or look through the minutes, but it will be there.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We are now on item number 50. We did have a speaker request form come in, but it was after public comment closed, so, okay. I don't see any opposition to reopening public comment, so public comment is now reopened, and it's reopened for everyone on item 50. So we'll start with Ken Kirkabee on item 50, which is the President's Plaza Report.
Thank you, Council, Mayor. I've been a little busy at the stock show, so I didn't get here in time to get that filled out. I'm here actually in request for the plaza, which should be built downtown. I'm asking that you're funded and build it. I've had a lot of requests personally, that they think is a needed project, and we should have it. And I've had worked with quite a few people in, can I say, larger housing that would like to go into condominiums. I'm talking mostly about the housing. And it's a needed, needed project in our community. I think it would help us downtown. Naturally, you know the taxes and that time, but I won't speak a long time, but I am definitely in favor of having it funded and built. It'd be great for our city and our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak on this public comment before we close it again? You sure?
I have a question that you may have.
All right, we'll get to that in a minute. Anyone else? Okay, public comment is now closed on this item. All right, item number 50 is President's Plaza Report, and we'll go to Alderman Jerry Wright.
Thank you, Mayor. Item 50 is the President's Plaza Report Chairman, and I'd like to make a motion that the agreements and statements set forth in the letters of January 15, 2014, from the President's Plaza Limited Liability Corporation, and of January 24, 2014, from the City Council Subcommittee for President's Plaza, be incorporated, as appropriate, into an amended existing developers' agreement for President's Plaza, and that the amended agreement be presented to the Legal and Finance Committee on Wednesday, February 26, 2014, and the City Council on Monday, March 3, 2014. If I have a second, if I might speak for just a moment.
We have a motion by Wright and a second by Richie Nordstrom.
Thank you, Mayor. Very quickly, I want to say that this process was worked very diligently since late November to get us to a point where we feel we can get a project that will work, and within the constraints of our desires as a community to have a parking structure in downtown, and to revitalize our economic activity downtown. This motion is to set it in motion so we can do a critical evaluation by our staff, work closely with the negotiations with our potential, and our committed developer. I think we can see a very worthwhile project, but I'm just asking for favorable action of this council so we can move forward to work out the details that we need to do to see reality. Thank you.
Would you mind reading your motion one more time?
I will, and I have a copy to give to Charlene. Thank you. I make the motion that the agreements and statements set forth in the letters of January 15, 2014, from the President's Plaza LLC, and of January 24, 2014, from the City Council Subcommittee for President's Plaza, be incorporated, as appropriate, into an amended existing developers' agreement for President's Plaza, and that the amended agreement be presented to the Legal and Finance Committee on Wednesday, February 26, 2014, and the City Council on Monday, March 3, 2014. Thank you.
Any discussion on that motion? Everyone understands it? We'll go to Brad Estes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess I have a question. As I understand, you want to send this to staff now? Is the, I'm not sure who I want to ask the question. I guess I'll ask, could I ask Mr. Shaffey a couple of questions, if I could, please? Mr. Shaffey, if I could, on this document dated January 15, 2014, prepared by, that you guys have signed, it says 350,000 square feet of additional taxable retail, commercial, hotel, and residential use in downtown. Does this 350,000 square feet include the parking ramp, or not include the parking ramp?
It does include the parking ramp.
It does?
Yes, sir.
So we're not proposing 350,000 square feet of taxable, additional taxable retail? So that statement in that deal is not correct. Is that correct?
It's correct to a certain extent, because at one stage, we were going to own the parking garage, but now at this time, since there are no new market tax credits involved, that parking garage will be deeded to the city.
Okay. So then, I guess I have a question for you, and you've had a chance to look at Mr. Wright's TIF financing thing, and he's proposed an annual payment to the TIF of about 760,000, if I'm correct, on his deal?
Approximately, yes.
Okay. And I believe one day when I was in your office, your calculations are that it'll generate about 660,000.
It depends on what size of building you put in.
Okay. I guess, thank you. Here's the deal. I, I'm pro-development, and I think TIFs are great things to put in the toolbox to be used. I supported this project six weeks ago. Mr. Shaffey called me, asked me to come to his office, and, you know, and asked me to support this project, and we came to council, and I think it was about six weeks ago. Mr. Shaffey talked, Mr. Carpenter talked, lady from Denver talked. We talked about the new market tax credits. It was a great project. I bought into it. I voted, I voted for that project. Now, I'm trying to figure out what's happened now, between then and now, what, that there's urgency, that we're changing the deal. What's happened? What did the city do, or what did we not do that we were supposed to do? We passed that. My friend Alderman Lewis gave an eloquent speech. He's the only one that talked. We passed it unanimously, you know? I'm just trying to figure it out, you know, and what I worry about, you know, the TIF was, TIF 73 was originally for about, I think it has the ability to be up for about $12 million. But what I think, you know, obviously, there's no parking ramp if you don't build assessed valuation on top of it. I mean, if we don't have incremental construction in this district, we're not going to fund this parking ramp. But it appears to me like the proposal is to take cash and buy down the TIF. I just, to me, there's just too many parts. We're wanting to put something into the record that already, there's two things here that aren't accurate, and it just seems to me like I would like to see the thing that we approved to wait for the new market tax credits. I mean, it's supposed, they're supposed to be announced in the first quarter, be announced. You know, and I have another, I have a question for those, the people that are in favor of this, and I respect, however this vote goes tonight, I respect what the people have done. How have you reconciled this in your head as to the expenses to date? I remember the first time I was over here in the chambers, council chambers, I was pitched this deal, and I said, well, what happens to the expenses on this thing to date? And I was told that those expenses would be absorbed by this new project. And that's fine, but please keep in mind that we're, there's $2 million given to us by downtown or Destination Rapid City, and the other $3 million is ours. The $2 million from Destination Rapid City has timetables to it, and it's not upfront money. It's reimbursed money, if I understand, on the backside. So if we give the go-ahead on this, and they start spending more money on expenses to get this designed, and then they don't meet those dates, through no fault of ours, are you, have you guys got the deal, have you got an agreement that we're held harmless on all the expenses? I mean, you need to think about that. I mean, you need to think about that. I'm for this project. I voted for it. We all did. You know, let's have a conversation about the $2 million. Destination Rapid City gave us the $2 million or give us a proposal. We sent it off to Public Works to do a report. We haven't even heard that report. You know, we all know what it said, and it didn't, it didn't name, you know, it didn't recommend giving this project $2 million. But I have one last thing I would really like to consider, and I hope that if you vote in favor of this, that you demand some transparency on this and that we have the ability to ask questions. You know, I'm not going to get, if this is about what the mayor said, then let's, you know, I'm not going to get into it whether or not the mayor should have, should or shouldn't have made his comments. But if we're going to inject $5 million with the cash into a project, we better have it written in there that we can ask questions and we don't get served with a cease and desist letter. And I hope you've all thought about that. So, with that, those are my concerns. I'm not going to vote in favor of sending anything forward. I want, I want this thing to play out. I was asked to support it by Mr. Shaffey. I voted to support it, and that's where I sit. Thank you.
We'll go to Charity Doyle.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My point of clarification is there's a disconnect, and I could be confused. I, my understanding was that the motion was to send this to staff to look at and to derive some harder information from which then we would make a decision. There's no decision being made tonight, is my understanding?
Correct. That's correct.
But I'm, the way Mr. Estes is talking, I'm just wondering if he heard something I did not. So, motion maker?
Let's go to the motion maker for clarification.
Thank you.
The motion says, if you want me to reread it verbatim, I will, that the agreements and statements set forth, I am going to read it for letter, that the agreements and statements set forth in the letters of January 15, 2014, from the President's Plaza LLC, and of January 24, 2014, to the City Council Subcommittee for President's Plaza, be incorporated as appropriated, as appropriate, into an amended existing developers agreement for President's Plaza, that the amended agreement be presented to the Legal and Finance Committee on Wednesday, February 26, 2014, and the City Council on Monday, March 3, 2014. The intent of this motion is that would be the time and only time that we would be making a vote for commitment on any specific issue. Let me give a little history to help my distinguished colleague on the left. The issue started in late November, early December, when we were discussing truly the Fourth Amendment, and I was perplexed and puzzled as to why this project has lingered and not proceeded so far. I knew the issue of the new market tax credits had been bannered about. I went down to the office of Hanny and visited with him and Pat and said, what would it take to get this project going? And they shared with me a $5 million investment. We talked about it, and it made a lot of sense to me, and that the money, that $5 million would go strictly and only to the parking structure, which is stated in all of our letters. That would reduce the amount of money that would have to be financed over a period of time. That's a business deal. It's better for us, as taxpayers. In our discussions, we also established the fact that we needed specific timeframes because the community and I'm sure the developers are getting wary of, when are we going to get this done? When can we proceed? The most common asked question, will it happen? Can it happen? I believe this is the first time in the history of this project that you have before you a signed agreement with the developer saying, this is when we're going to do it, and this is when it's going to be done. This is historic. But these two letters and this discussion tonight do not lock us into that. It will come in the developer's agreement. As for the taxability, in my own letter of transmission, the comment of the taxable 350,000 feet, square feet, may have been in error, but in the actual letter, I stated of new taxable and productive property. We cannot argue with that because right now we have a vacant lot that's paying absolutely zero taxes and making absolutely zero money short of parking fees, which are not even covering the cost of maintaining the parking lot. In addition, we are going to see productive property from this development because of the parking construction, and alone will free up the ability for other adjoining vacant lots for development. We're also talking about, I believe, 60 condominiums or 70, thereabouts. We're talking about a hotel. We're talking about retail outlets, and I believe a financial institution. If that's not productive economic taxable activity, I don't know what is. I think that what we have done here is taken this project that has bonded and lost steam for a lot of reasons, is in a position where we have some definitive boundaries and goals to achieve, which will be negotiated and talked through the proper chain of command through our staff, through council members, through the developers, and the only real binding agreement, as I can see, will be when we do the developer's agreement. I hope I'm right there. I believe I'm right, and that's what we're looking for. And the question about assurity of getting the project done, I was in the construction business a long time ago, was in Public Works for a long time. I know if you go into a contract, it's very legal, and if you go through state law and bidding process and so forth, that holds a lot of accountability to a project. You also have the ability to bond for surety, payment, and performance. Our own TIF procedure stipulates that prior to us acknowledging or accepting or engaging in it, that all of the things that have been questioned, proof of financing and so forth, are there. Without formulating, I believe, an agreement, which this gives us an opportunity to do, we cannot get to that point. That's why I'm asking for support of the council to send this so it can be evaluated and processed, so we have a workable document, a workable process, so we know where we're at, and we can either get this job or not get it done, and I believe we can and I believe we should. I stand for questions. Thank you.
May I? Be Laurenti.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I, too, kind of echo Councilman Estes's words here. I was obviously part of that unanimous vote that we just had just recently in January, and I still don't understand if that was the motion that you just read. I don't understand what's changed since that, that vote that we made unanimously to support this project. And from my understanding, even from the original agreement we had, if the project didn't get the new market tax credits, there was already an agreement in place for a scaled-down version with a square footage that needed, that was a requirement, square footage, that was still going to be built even if the new market tax credits didn't become feasible in this deal. Now, the only thing that I see that's changed since our unanimous vote to support this project is that they're asking for three more million dollars, the taxpayers' money, and there's $2 million more coming from Destination Rapid City. And it seems to me that we're trying to change the storyline. That's about all that's changed. This project isn't dependent on, from what I'm getting is that this project now is hinging on this new $5 million, although we just approved this unanimously just a matter of weeks ago without the $5 million, and nobody said anything about needing $5 million. And I think that's what, I don't want to put words in Councilman Estes's mouth, but we didn't hear about this just a few weeks ago when this was unanimously approved. So, I can't support sending this back with the structure that was just read by Mr. Wright because the only thing that I see that's different is that they want $3 million more from the taxpayers and $2 million more from Destination Rapid City, and we're getting an additional 150 parking spots out of that, but that comes out to over $33,000 per parking spot. And we just had an item on the agenda that came from staff, and we're wanting to send this back to staff, but staff just gave us tonight recommendations on parking, that it would cost us $20,000 per parking spot if we built our own structure, multi-level structure. So, why would we invest more of the taxpayers' money in Destination Rapid City for $33,000 per spot? It just doesn't add up. It doesn't make sense. I just can't support it as it's being structured and presented. Thank you.
Richie Nordstrom.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm not, I know I'm not going to change anybody's minds on this, but if I can ask a question of Alderman Wright, a couple of questions for clarification. Mr. Wright, the proposal that you worked up is more along the line of a tentative agreement with the developers so that we have a working basis to proceed forward?
That is correct.
The next part of my question would be taking this tentative agreements that we're presenting to staff if this motion passes, is where the staff really gets to digest all the figures and calculations that you worked up. Is that correct?
That is true, and then some.
Yes. And then, if you can address a little bit of that portion of the concern for the rationale for the additional $3 million to put into this project, because I want, I heard one thing, and I want to make sure that you and I heard both the same thing. So, could you kind of describe the mechanism that took place after the unanimous approval and then the subsequent meetings with Dream Designs and President's Plaza staff?
Yes. I'm just trying to get a date here, but in the addendum four, I have here an incomplete document, but it started out to say the developer will have until December 1 of 2014 to obtain sufficient new tax credit and must elect by January 1 of 2015 or, I can't remember, 16 to proceed with the construction and so forth. What we have gained with this negotiation is the one option, if we infuse the money into it, is 500 spots, not 350. We also have got a project that's going to begin this year, not in a year and a half or whenever it would be, and we're not waiting for new market tax credits.
Mr. Wright, if I can interrupt for a second, and I think this is a key point, that's what you're trying to address there, is the timing of when this project is going to come out with the additional $3 million.
Yes.
And in addition, if DRC will support this, that it will be in support of the $3 million, so that's where the $5 million is coming from?
That's correct.
But it's totally correct that the $3 million of that is where we have to encourage, encourage the wrong, but have staff take a look at for funding sources for this. So, we don't have to...
I'm not sure if it's staff. It's $3 million from the city's sources, but what the $3 million does is it will fund.
Primarily what I'm trying to ask is that on the $3 million, doesn't necessarily have to come out of tax dollars. We could bond it or something like that. Am I correct in understanding that that's a potential source of a funding?
It's income from us, our contribution. What I think we need to clarify in this issue of an investment of additional cash by the city, we could take the same infusion of cash into the original scenario, and an analysis I did is buying down the cost of the structure so we don't have to finance as much on the TIF, and if we stay at a 350 park installed garage, which I believe was like 12 million or something like that, if we buy half of that down with 6.8, roughly, I'm pulling numbers down, we're only financing that much over a period of time. My estimate was we'd pay off the TIF in 10 point some years. This takes basically the 20-plus years. All we're doing by putting the infusion in, and there's two options, we can buy down the original project, or we can add on to, and the calculations, the estimates are accurate, I believe, add 150 spots, have 500, pay it off because we're paying down the debt, and almost have the same amount of money exchanging and have a significant gain in the net parking. Let's realize that we're looking at economic development, which is going to require in demand parking, not just the parking that's going to be in this building. We had a commitment in 20, excuse me, 1974 to build parking on St. Joe Street. We're 40 years late, and we have a parking lot right now that only has 100, I think, 129 stalls. This is a tremendous opportunity for us to do something really well, and all I'm asking, the committee did their work, we've met with the developers, and yes, some things changed. Take it to the staff, let the committee continue work on it, we'll have communication with any and all of you that want to communicate, and I think we've put together a package deal which is very, very beneficial to the city. The tax dollars are not being wasted. They are not being squandered because if we don't pay down the cash to the TIF, they're still being paid by taxpayers. It's just different. Plus, you're paying interest. That doesn't make sense. Yes, you are paying interest. Did I answer your questions, Richie?
I'll use the floor for the moment, if I may.
Okay. We'll go to Brad Estes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate the work you've done in this. I mean, Mr. Hall and Mr. Shaffey are proven developers in the community. They've delivered this, this community millions of dollars with assessed projects. My question is, is how is staff going to work on it if we have moving numbers? How can staff figure out, work on this if we still don't know what's going to be built? How can, and I guess that's, that's my question, because it seems to be a little bit of a moving target.
May I answer that question?
Well...
Let him have the floor, please.
You know, and you mentioned surety. I didn't, I wasn't questioning surety. I'm just trying to figure out, when you look at $5 million, and we get this, I mean, and if you compare that versus the new market tax credits, we may get this delivered or started a year, year and a half early, that's, in my mind, that's a, that's a significant premium to pay for a, for a early start date. Again, I, I go back to how, how sure these, you know, the lady came all the way from Denver, talked about the tax credits, talked about how good the project is. If it was good then, how is it not good today? And that's, and I'm just trying to figure out, you know, how staff is going to put something together, and I can't vote because, because basically, we're, we're voting to ask staff to figure out how to put this together using $5 million with the cash and saying, you know, and I want to see the new market tax credit deal play out. Thank you.
May I please answer his question?
You may.
You're asking the question, how can we address the cost of a moving target? We answer the moving target by doing just exactly what I've asked for in this motion, and then we take these agreements, which we have visited with and came to a consensus on, and start putting down pencils and coming up with specific details as to what we're going to do. It's never been done. This will be done then. This is, I may ask the developers, is this where we need to go to negotiate at the next step? Is this true or not true?
Yes, sir. It is true.
So, in order, in order to get down to what it's going to cost us or as close as we can, we need to agree at how many park installs we're going to do, what we're going to do and this kind of stuff, and it's going to take some work over the next month, and that's where we're going to get the answers, Brad. And if we continue like we are, we're going to be continually batting back and forth and guessing. Here's a chance, and this is the opportunity, and it isn't just staff that's doing it, it's these guys, it's us evaluating it. It's going to give them a sense of commitment. They can put a little more time and effort into this and close, they're closer to us, and I want to see, if I say close the deal, it may sound too hard, but at least that way we can get to the point we can go to a contract. We're not there yet, and I think that's what this is all about. If we pass this off, the committee met, and that was the purpose of that committee, to deal with our developers on this project in confidence, which we did, we never breached that, nor did they, and we brought to you agreements that we all signed. If you notice, that everything was done by letter and signed by signature, so there's a sense of sincerity and commitment by all parties involved. All we're asking is go to the next step, and let's get it to the point where we can answer those questions you have, and I don't think we can if we don't.
If I may, Mr. ... I'm sorry. Public comment is now closed, but if somebody asks you a question, you can, you can answer it, so we'll go to Charity Doyle.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think Laurenti and Estes are asking a fair question, and that is, what has changed between December 16 and what prompted these discussions? I know one component was leveraged... I know one component was leveraging the gift that DRC wanted to bestow on the city to dedicate towards parking and matching funds, the $2 million in matching funds, that's one component of it. But based on how that meeting, and of course, the following unanimous vote went, the meeting prior to December 16th, what did change? Is that something that you can or are comfortable addressing, Mr. Shaffey?
There are a lot of several moving targets on this project, as you all are aware. And a couple of things I really want to clarify, too, before I answer that question. Number one, 100% of the city funds, 100% of the city funds, are going to pay for the public parking garage and the cleanup and the burying of the power line. The public funds will only pay 50% of the cost of those public improvements. The other 50% is being paid for by Pat Hall and Hanny Shaffey, which is an amount of $7 million. The cost of the parking spots, you know, somebody mentioned $20,000 is the estimated cost, and this one is 30 million, I mean, $30,000. The estimated cost of the taxpayers' portion, or cost to the taxpayers per each parking spot, is actually near $13,000 a parking spot. Way less than what the city staff has estimated for a public parking to be paid for in a conventional manner by the public funding. As far as the other 50%, is all paid by the private developers. The city has all the right to ask any questions regarding to the public funding of the parking garage and regarding to even how the parking garage is funded. This project is two components. One is a public component, and one is a private component. The private component is the public garage, and it's paid for in a public partnership, where the developers are bringing in 50% of the cash, and the city is bringing in 50% to come in with a public garage that is completely owned by the city, that is generating funds to the city, which the income from the parking garage has never been even addressed or has never been accounted for, which is in excess of a quarter of a million dollars a year. This process, I want to thank, actually, I should have even mentioned before, I want to thank the members of the committee, including the city attorney who sat in some of the meetings, and the mayor, too, who sat in a few of those meetings. You know, this is a committee that is made of council members with different backgrounds, with different political attitudes. And I tell you what, if you saw the letter, it's signed by the three members of the committee. It's not signed by one or another, which means there is a consensus. And what is discussed behind the scene, which was supposedly, you know, statements that were supposed to be done in confidentiality or what have you. It's, and that was the goal of the committee. I think the committee has served its purpose in cooperation with the mayor and the city attorney. And we hope with the involvement of the rest of the city staff that they could come up with a recommendation that is justified to the city taxpayers and that you guys sitting up there can justify it to every taxpayer who asked you a question.
Hanny, if I may?
The change, I'm sorry, the change that happened since last time, we all knew that we were applying for a new market tax credit. And why were the new market tax credits more crucial to this project than ever before? Number one, we had a tax increment district that was established a long time ago, about five years ago, for this project. That tax increment footprint has been reduced in a state of, including properties from Omaha Street to the Knights of Columbus, its footprint is limited only to that block, which generates less taxes than what was planned in the original plan. So therefore, the new market tax credits became the substitute for that reduction of that revenue. Can this project stand without new market tax credits or without this, with the reduction on this revenue? I really don't know, depending on the interest rate that we could get and depending on the final cost for the project. Yes, there is a design for the project, and we hope to proceed with it. As far as the new market tax credits update, we have sat here and there were public statements made completely against new market tax credits, which reduces our chances. So working with the committee and working with you folks, we were hoping to look at this alternative, which will deliver the project about approximately a year and a half to two years ahead of time. And by the way, in that two-year ahead of time or expedited schedule, there is about roughly a million and a half to a million six in real estate taxes, and there is about a half a million dollars of parking fees that are collected from that parking garage, which is approximately $2.1 million that we will not have if we delayed the construction by those two years waiting for the new market tax credit. So there are pluses and minuses. You know what I mean? So it's expedite the project, and nobody is guaranteeing that we're going to get the new market tax credits, even if we waited the two years. So this is an expediting, almost a for-sure deal. And we have given you a schedule that we're committed to. The schedule that, you know, Councilman Wright has mentioned, and I think Councilman Estes has questioned, yes, it is based on realistic schedules. We have consulted with our consultants, the designers, how soon can we get it? Remember, we had this project under contract with a contractor. So we were ready to start construction. Unfortunately, the circumstances were not fit to start construction. We were actually about to start, you know, Terry is here, and we worked with the city staff to actually start notifying the neighborhood, what streets are going to be closed and where we're going to park the people. You know, so we're ready to start as soon as we reach an agreement, and hopefully we could reach it soon. Thank you very much. I hope that addressed your question.
Well, sort of. I mean, there's one point of confusion, and that is the footprint was reduced prior to the adoption of the fourth addendum. So I don't really think that that was relevant in this case and what stirred this. So I'm left to, I'm left to assume, and you can certainly correct me if I'm wrong. You said, and I quote, "statements made against new market tax credits from this body." So am I to understand that something set up here was put on the, I mean, you know, do the CDEs watch these meetings? Do they hear these messages? How would that message get back to them? And what are the ramifications thereof, I guess? If it's something that we said or did that has now diminished those chances?
The, if you watched the city council minutes from previously, when that agreement was brought about, there were some remarks and there were discussions that not in support of new market tax credits. So there is controversy around new market tax or obtaining a new market tax credit. CDEs are just like us as a community, trying to get a grant to maintain their CDE status. If they cannot, if they cannot go into areas that are controversial while they have a lot of people waiting for this program for their own communities who don't have controversy like we do. So hopefully, we will be united and we move on forward.
But is the controversy part of their consideration? I apologize, but I don't remember everything that the gal you flew in said. My understanding was that it was really based on the merits of the project itself. I mean, how, if there is controversy brewing, is that something that they actually do take into consideration? And does that in fact affect the decision-making process?
Two of the major criteria requirements for a new market tax credit are community impact and community support. If those don't exist-
Okay.
They would not go invest in the communities.
So it is fair to say then-
Or in the project, sorry.
That is the single thing that changed between December and now?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, I yield.
Thank you. I hope that-
Brad Estes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I promise this is my last time, but I just want to be clear, Hanny. Mr. Shaffey, I'm sorry.
That's all right.
Wasn't my idea for you to apply for new market tax credits. The premise of applying for new market tax credits goes to the agreement dated September 2009. I mean, it's not like, I mean, so, but I want to get back, I just want to finish with one thing. I think the revitalization of downtown has been just absolutely amazing.
Yes.
And I want to see your project built where it's at. But I really, if this does go to staff, I would like to see a report about the parking included in this because we keep saying 100% of the city funds go to public parking. And let's, we all agree that you can build a downtown district, and you don't have the furnishing of parking. You can build whatever you want downtown, you don't have to provide parking spaces. Now, whether or not a bank would loan somebody money, or somebody would be crazy enough to build something downtown of this nature with absolutely zero parking, that's between. But if you take, you know, this project, however, whether it's 350,000 square feet of retail space or 150,000 square feet of retail space and, you know, 200,000 square foot of parking garage, but if you, whatever you take, the motel and the condos, and you build it somewhere other than the downtown district, we have a parking requirement. We, you know, so the staff would be able to calculate how many parking spaces this project, you know, what the demands are. And if you've got like 150 rooms, you got to have a stall per room, plus probably about 20 for your employees, you got to probably have 1.5 for each condo for the retail space. You got to have one spot for every 200 square feet. You know, this, we talk about how many spaces we're delivering to the public. Probably in real numbers, if this were anywhere else, it probably puts, you know, have a stress or a requirement of 300 to 350 spaces. And then you look at the fact that we have 140 sitting there free and clear. So, I mean, do we really have a net gain? I just think you need to be real careful how you say, you know, the city's money is going to deliver to the public. We may build 500 spots, but we don't know that it's actually going to ease any parking pressures once this project's done. That's why I was so in favor of the structure under the new market tax credits. Because, you know, for the, you know, the TIF and the Vision Fund, and that, you know, and we're getting, you know, this project was going to get built and it had parking spaces. But now we're putting cash in, and we're still not sure if we're going to deliver a net plus or a net gain in parking spaces once we know all the demands of this project. And with that, I appreciate everybody's time. Thanks.
Richie Nordstrom.
Thank you, Mayor. Hanny, you made a comment that significantly opposes some of the suggestions that have been made up here, the cost per stall. Would you repeat the number you came up with again and how you arrived at that number?
Okay, the city is paying 2.8 million dollars, and the city is adding another $3 million. That's 5.8 million dollars of city funds. There is at least, we're saying in the contract, minimum of 500 parking spots. If you took 5.8 million dollars of taxpayers' money, divided it by 500, at least 500 parking spots, that's just a tad below $12,000 a spot. That's what is costing the taxpayers. People are going to say the TIF and what have you. The TIF, we're actually upfronting the money for the TIF. If the TIF doesn't pay off, the city taxpayers do not risk a penny. If we don't have a structure to generate the real estate taxes, and we just build a parking garage, similar to the parking ramp, that parking garage will still pay zero taxes forever. This building here will not only pay the other portion of the cost of the parking garage, but also will generate real estate taxes in the tune of 750 or 650, depending on whose numbers you're looking at, forever. And we just talked about taxes going up once in a while. That's taxes that's based on the middle levy of today. So it's like, and that's at least, because that's actually some of the components of the project are evaluated with unfinished evaluation. By the time they are finished, the taxes may go even higher than that. So it's, this is not, the scope of the project, if you looked at the, you know, Councilmember Estes is saying, well, you know, look at the net gain of parking spots or what have you. There is going to be a lot of net gain in parking spots. Not only a lot of net gain of parking spots, publicly owned parking spots, because the parking garage is going to be publicly owned by the city. That's number one. Number two, the building itself will generate a lot of taxes, and it will be paying the city fees for every user within the building. You know what I mean? So it's like, it's not really limited just to parking only. The goals of the project, when we started, and if you evaluate the RFPs twice, one of the three goals was parking. The other one is to bring people to live downtown, to bring more economic activities downtown. And we're grateful for the progress that happened, since this project wasn't even in concept, which attracted a lot of activity, just in concept, attracted this many activities. Imagine when it becomes a reality, how much activities it's going to bring. So this is-
Mr. Shaffey, if I may interrupt. The numbers that you're describing, I guess, is going to wind up with whichever side is promoting or taking the adversarial position on this. And I don't mean that in a condensating way, that it's the persons that are supporting the project or not supporting this motion. And I don't mean adversarial in regards to the project, it's just adversarial to this motion. What I'm trying to say is that whichever side is there on, that's the number that they're going to support. But that's the number we got to establish.
If I may address that in even a different format. All the costs of the parking garage will be audited, certified, and to the penny, every penny that is done by the public and done by the private that is included in the parking garage will be audited, certified, and accounted for. Does that make sense? So whatever the costs come out to be, they're going to come out to be, regardless if it is 19,000. We want to build it for as little as possible with the highest quality and the least maintenance. You know what I mean? Those are the criterias.
Mr. Shaffey, if I can interrupt once more, is that you're exactly right about when that certification is going to take place, and that is coming on this project. The next part, and I would agree with Alderman Estes, to support his concept of a parking study. I think we need to do that. Because I believe very strongly that this project is building for the parking issues that are going to take place in 2016. And it won't take a look at the future parking that's going to be needed for the city of Rapid City. That's why I'm supporting the idea of Alderman Estes', this idea, the concept of putting forth a study. But I don't want to tie it to this project in this sense, is that we need to get this out of the ground in some fashion and as soon as possible, in my opinion. And this, what Alderman Wright has made a motion for, will do that. Thank you. I'll yield the floor.
We'll go to Chad Lewis.
I call the question.
Question's been called, are there any objections to calling the question? We have an objection from a councilman who hasn't spoken yet. So we have a second to the motion to call the vote. We have a second to handle it as a motion. Okay, well, if we don't have a second, then the motion dies for lack of a second to call the question. Okay? Motion dies for lack of a second. We'll go to Bill Clayton.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. What I'd like to do, please, is ask for clarification on the motion. And forgive me, Jerry, I've got the only copy that seems to be up here, and I'll certainly give it back to you in a minute. But one of the things that I heard you say is that this would go to staff for further vetting. But the way the motion you read reads is the agreements and statements set forth in the letters from President's Plaza and, as were presented by the subcommittee, be incorporated as appropriate into an amended existing developers' agreement. So what I'm reading here and what I heard you say through discussion don't seem to go together. So I think at the very least, we need clarification on the motion, if not a new motion, that if we're going to vote on a motion, we need to know what we're voting on. Thank you.
You may.
My understanding of the development of the developers' agreement, it's an effort by the city staff, city consultants, and the developers. Is that not correct? Do I defer that to council? Joel? Who develops the agreement? It's a group effort? Do you do it, and it's an effort by others?
That's true, but what I understand is that we are supposed to develop that agreement based on the numbers that you've developed in the documents. I don't believe we have a lot of leeway. I think I know what you're trying to do is to put the $3 million and the $2 million into the parking, but we only have so much leeway because you and the developers and the group have come up with a proposal, and we can't ignore that either.
But you do put the agreement together- But you do put the agreement together and it's run through staff, it's run through finance, through us and everyone else, correct? The agreement? And it's worked with the developers, is that correct?
If you pass it, we will bring forward an agreement hopefully on that date and sit down with the developers and try to work out the specific details.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And also issues such as schedules and times and, I believe in the TIF and so forth, it also stipulates that there's a financial assurance and so forth on and on. A lot of the things that have been questioned and discussed prior to would be a part of the agreement. I think we're talking about amending the existing agreement, just updating it and including new developments which were not in there before. So to answer the question, Bill, it is basically a product of our staff and the developers.
If I may, Mr. Mayor, I guess where I have a problem is where it talks about the agreements from their letter and the agreements from your letter be incorporated. And I think as Joel said, it pretty much draws a line in the sand and doesn't seem to give much leeway for variance from what's been established and presented. And it sounds like in conversation that your desire is to use that as a starting point or a suggestion and then have staff further vet it and deem what would be appropriate to set a schedule, you know, and footprint so we know what we're building, how big we're building, when we're building, how much, where the money would go. So I think your intent and your words are just a little bit separate. And all I'm saying is what it says here and what you read versus what you've said in later conversation seem to be a little bit separate.
Well, again, to clarify, this document where we discussed start dates, finish dates, and funding and that kind of stuff where we agreed upon and we brought it forward to you, and I fully understand that the developer's agreement will have to be voted upon and approved by this council. So I understand that if you don't agree with a certain term that's proposed in this letter in order to get the agreement passed, it will have to come to the council's agreement or at least the majority of it. I fully expect that. So these are bases, a starting point. When I sat down and met with the developers and I said, realistically, if we take this option, what's a start date? When's a completion date? When's an occupancy date? Other assumptions were made and we feel that we had a consensus amongst us in our meetings, and this is where we agreed. I think in the final negotiation, the final agreement, if it changes some, so be it. That's the way it is. I'm not saying that you're going to necessarily have an agreement that says on March 1st of 2014, the design is complete. I don't know. I mean, I think some things are going to move, absolutely. This is the basis where the developer's agreement can begin to be put together. And that's my intent, and I believe that, is that not the intent of the developer? Mr. Hall? He's saying yes. It's not cast in stone by these letters, but they're sure a good place to start. And you have to start somewhere.
And we'll go to Alderman and Amanda Scott.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a question. I'm not really sure who to address the question to, if President Jerry Wright, Council President Jerry Wright wants to try to field this one.
I'll try.
Part of the agreement that I read in there, we keep talking about this 2 million that's going to be donated by Destination Rapid City. I'm a little concerned about this question, and I think it needs to be answered, is I don't believe Destination Rapid City has actually given the money to the city. And so when we're talking about this agreement, is that, Alderman Wright, is that where you're considering the staff working with them and getting that in as part of the agreement? I mean, to make sure all the parties come together on this?
Destination Rapid City, through their representative, is committed, and the developers concur in our meetings that their statement to us is they have timeframes, that there needs to be a commitment by June of this year, and I believe a contract in effect by December of this year, and it has to be within the boundaries of the parking district. They support this project if it comes to the point where it's ready to take it. It's not going to be a cash write-up front, but it's eligible and they are willing to commit it to this project. Yes.
And that would be part of the agreement? When this amendment comes forward and stuff, it would be signed off on-
Yes.
I'm just trying to make sure all the i's are dotted and t's crossed as well. So just for clarification, I know, so in my mind, I know what I'm voting on here. Basically, we're just turning this over to staff, using what is presented from the letters as a starting point and see if we can make this happen and bring back another amendment to the President's Plaza agreement that we as a council will be voting on and considering again.
Yes.
Thank you.
Alderman Clayton, you still have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. With all that being said, then I would appreciate if the motion maker would alter the motion in some way so that what we read into the record is reflective of what's been agreed upon verbally, so that we've got one concrete motion and we all then are voting on what's been read rather than the multiple conversations that we've heard through the evening.
If I may, I would add a sentence to the original motion, if the secondary was listening, to the effect that the items expressed within the letters aforementioned shall be used in the development and guidance in the development of the proposed amendments to the developer's agreement. Is that clear? Is that fair? I don't even remember what I said, but I know what I tried to say. Yes, the letters will be used as guides in the development of, yes. I think that's probably when I said incorporated as appropriate, but the intent is a guide, yes. So we need to reword that.
Should we come back to you while you're writing your amendment?
We'll just take a break in place. We'll be right here in a minute. With the motion standing as it was read with the following sentence added to the end, the aforementioned letters will be used as a guide in the development of the developer's agreement.
Fair?
Okay with you guys out there?
Richie was a seconder.
You, Richie, second, you okay with that?
Okay. Brad Estes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a quick question for Mr. Shaffey, if I could.
Go ahead.
I lie. I promise that was, Mr. Shaffey, earlier you had said that the CDEs or whatever, the new market people kind of pay attention to what's going on, and you thought that maybe some remarks may have a detrimental effect on our ability to get new market tax credits? Would that be a fair statement?
Yes, sir.
So what do you think they're going to think when we have an applicant, when you guys have an application for new market tax credits and we vote tonight to just forget them? What do you think the chances of getting them are if they see that the city council here is inclined to just give you cash now and forget those? Do you really think they're going to, how do you think we're going to sit then?
Well, if I may, Mr. Mayor-
You may.
New market tax credits have a lot of fees associated with them. And we are not going to risk adding more cost to this project for something that we have a lot less chances to get than what we had before. So therefore, we have not actually even applied for a new market tax credit yet, even though the allocations are coming out soon. So we have not even applied for this round yet. And we don't intend to apply because our circumstances are a lot less, or our chances are a lot less. It takes a lot of money just for the consultant. No legal fees, no accounting fees, is about $250,000. And we're not going to risk that.
So this deal we went through six weeks ago, you knew you were never going to do it?
No, we knew we were going to do it at that time, but after the debate that happened during that action, we actually realized that our chances are less. That's when the decision was made. And council member Wright and the rest of the committee met with us and explored ideas, and this is one of the ideas, to keep the project intact. I mean, if we did not have this option, we'd probably go risk the money and apply for it, but I don't think we will get it.
So on the record tonight, you're telling me that you have no intentions of applying for any new market tax credits in this year?
If this concept is adopted, we will not be applying for new market-
If this, okay.
Yes, sir.
My guess is what I'm wondering is, let's say this concept is adopted, but it doesn't result in agreement, but you've got to apply for them. How's this posturing going to impact your ability for those tax credits if you don't know for sure, if we don't know for sure how this turns out?
We probably apply for it two rounds, two cycles, instead of just one cycle, which for guarantee, we will not be starting construction until 2016.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Charity Doyle.
I know everybody wants to end this dialogue, and I apologize. Something you just said brought up another question, Mr. Shaffey. Mayor, if it's okay?
Sure.
This is the first I've heard that this round has not been applied for. And you made a comment about your chances have been diminished. Do you have any documentation? I mean, do you have any indication from the CDEs that you're working with that those chances are? I mean, you know, this is your arena. I'm just, what are you basing that on in that decision to hold off and see how this goes? I think that's a fair question.
I don't know how to explain this any further than what I just said. CDEs are looking for impact, community impact, and community support. And when they are not satisfied with the community support, I guarantee you, there are a lot of communities aligning up to get those new market tax credits. And it's, CDEs are like dating. So like, you know, they're not going to go after somebody who's saying, well, I'm going to question, why are you giving us the new market tax credits? They're not going to do that because they're going to risk the political ramification of that for future allocations that they're going to go after. So therefore, it's going to be a lot more difficult for us to apply and gain them. If we did not get ratified this agreements or these concepts, and hopefully we'll work with city staff to get them, and city council and the mayor and the city attorney, of course, then we'll probably try, we might even skip the cycle because the ripples are still in the air, and go the next cycle. We were supposed to go to a conference in San Diego this month, actually last month, you know, about a week ago. We actually canceled and we did not go. We're supposed to go to an April conference in Miami to round up CDEs. We're not planning to go this year because we really don't want to go and create more ripples than what there are on this project and then new market tax credit arena. Does that answer the question, I hope?
In part. I'll yield.
Any further discussion on the motion? Everyone understands it? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Roll call, please.
Aye.
Wright.
Aye.
Scott.
Aye.
Nordstrom.
Aye.
Clayton.
Aye.
Laurenti.
No.
Estes.
No.
Lewis.
Aye.
Motion carries. Six to two.
All right. Thank you, everyone, for the discussion. We are now on item 51. This is the DHS FEMA funding for the city of Rapid City. We'll go to our city finance officer, Pauline Sumption.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We submitted our first reimbursement request to FEMA for those costs that were eligible in the first 30 days where we could reimburse the 85%. We got notification last week that we will receive approximately $1,350,000 for the federal share of that as well as $159,000 for the state share and that we should receive the cash in hand within a couple of weeks. So that's the first process. The next set will be for those expenses between days 31 and 90, which the feds can reimburse at 80% and the state would still do 10. And then anything 91 days to 180 days would be 75%. So Dave in my office is doing an excellent job working with the FEMA project specialists to get these project worksheets completed and submitted.
Do we have a motion for acknowledgement? Motion by Scott, second by Laurenti. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We are now in public hearing, items 52 through 58. I do not have any speaker request forms on these items. Have I missed anyone? Public hearing is open and now closed. Items 52 through 58, do we have a motion for all of those items?
Second.
Motion by Lewis, second by Doyle. Pauline Sumption.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I need to remove 58 from the consent calendar, please.
Okay. All right. So the motion has been amended and it's okay with the seconder to approve 52 through 57. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item 58, this is resolution, levying assessment for cleanup of miscellaneous property.
I would like to remove number four from the list as the property owner came in and paid that today.
Do we have a motion to approve item 58 with the removal of number four within item 58? Motion by Lewis, second by Doyle?
Yes.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. 59, bill list.
Bill list is that which has been attached to the agenda. Total amount is $3,664,145.71.
Motion by Laurenti, second by Doyle. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We have motion to adjourn. Motion by Scott, second by Lewis. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We're adjourned. Have a good-